Jack or I'll does that, Sean, whoever puts it together.
Good evening and welcome to the Norfolk Board of Selectmen's meeting of Tuesday, February 5th. My name is Jim Lehan. To my left is Mr. Scott Bugby. Mr. Gary, our third selectman, has a conflict this evening and will not be joining us. To Mr. Bugby's left is Mr. Jack Hathaway, our town administrator, and to his left, Marion Harrington, our executive assistant. And we have Mr. Scott Bragdon, our human resource director, joining us this evening as well. Jack, would you read the agenda, please?
I'd be happy to. Our meeting order at 7:00 PM. First order of business, we have Mr. Bragdon who reviewed some updated selectman policies. At 7:30, we have the water rate public hearing. At 8:00 PM, we have the Economic Development Committee in for an update. We have a number of action items and two discussion items, including election and town meeting dates, as well as the Old Town Hall. That was Mr. Gary's request, so we'll see how that goes.
Actually, I think that was a joint request. We just want to get his input. As is our policy, when one of our members is missing, we try to minimize as best we can some of the agenda items, but Mr. Gary's conflict was of a late nature, so we had to continue with some of the ones that we have on the agenda this evening. Please be advised is that this meeting is being video and audiotaped as well. Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. Scott, it is yours.
Great. So, I've made some, a few adjustments to the human resource policy, mostly to reflect benefits that are already in place for some of our employees in the police department. And I've also written an alcohol awareness policy. You have already voted on a snowplow damage mailbox policy, but I just kind of reworded it into the standard thing that it was an attempt to be, make a big change, have run it by Bob, but there is enough change in the wording that you do need to revote on it. And then, we have written a workers' compensation policy, which has been written to reflect our current practices. So, I've highlighted the ones that, where I've made changes, I've made half a dozen or so changes in the human resource policy. I'm only giving the pages where there are changes. So, the first change has to do with, it just, when we're posting a position, we try to do it in-house. If it's not filled in-house before we advertise, we're going to source by word of mouth, so that we don't go through the expense of advertising. So, that's the only change there. The next set of changes were made to, again, reflect what we're now calling the Public Safety Communications Specialists, who answer our 911 calls at the police station. The most significant change, and this does affect others, including myself, is the way for the group of people under this policy, we're going to calculate vacation. While the weeks and days of vacation that one earns stays the same, under current practice, come July 1st, the entire amount is credited to the individual. On the other side of the coin, new employees in their first year can go up to 18 months without any vacation, which is also not correct, in our opinion. So, basically, what we've done, and this is not a unique thing here, it's very common practice, is to change the policy to earn vacation on a monthly basis. So, you earn that vacation starting in your first full month earned worked. You earn it based on full months. You can earn up to five days if you're a five-day-a-week employee in your first year of employment. After that, it's two weeks of vacation that you would earn, and again, you earn it on a monthly basis. It is earned in the first 10 months of the year, makes the math a lot easier, and it can be taken on account ahead of the time. The real difference is if one leaves. If, under current policy, if I left July 15th, I would get my full allotment of vacation paid to me. Under this policy, I would get what I've earned during that calendar year based on the months. What we have, what we have done in this policy, however, has also sort of grandfathered people who are eligible for retirement. For instance, Marion, who is eligible to retire. There is no way that Mary can leave this place without being eligible for retirement. As she is today, she would continue to be eligible when she left for her full allotment of vacation. So, Marion and others who are, you know, long-service employees, you know, Julie.
She has a no-trade clause. She can't, she can't go anywhere.
This doesn't affect any of the people in, under union agreements. It doesn't affect people in contracts like Jack, but it's the rest of the folks.
I'm glad.
And for the, for the most part, it benefits, you know, we have more turnover, more people now in the police department, and so it actually gives those people a little bit of vacation during their first year.
Yeah, I'm glad you cleaned this up. I remember we uncovered this in the old personnel policies, and it was just, it was a very unfair system.
Right. The other thing is that it was almost impossible to write it for the first year, so it was comprehensible. So, you know, I tried and tried, and I just couldn't do it. So, that is what it is. I've also said in here that it would, this would become effective 1st of July of next year. So, while the rest of these would be effective immediately, that is effective 1st of July. The next change is just merely adding, it should have been on here before. It says that based, that additional vacation, if a person comes who's really experienced, we could give them additional vacation if we wanted to. It said that I could do, I proved that, but also it says, now, Jack can do that. So, pretty much the rest of the changes here are just for the Public Safety Communications Specialists. By the way, that's the title that they requested. It's a current industry title for them. So, but what this says is that they are required to work in a scheduled holiday. They will be given another day off with pay or receive the holiday pay in addition to the regular scheduled pay. That's current practice. That's what that's meant to be. The callback pay does, would go for anybody in, under this policy, which isn't a great deal, it's primarily them. They are currently receiving three hours of compensation, which is the minimum callback. Really, in reality, no one else is called back. There would be no time that I would be called back. I can't think of an example where, you know, Marion would be called back. So, it is really those individuals that receive that, and that is their current, their current practice. So, that's why I put that in there. The next section is benefits that are specific to the Public Safety Communications Specialists. The emergency medical dispatcher stipend is $500 for full-time employees, $250 for part-time. They receive a meal allowance of $5 per shift. Clothing allowance reimbursement up to $450 annually. Clothing cleaning allowance added to their base pay at $450 annually. Again, that's all stuff they receive today and have been receiving. And then, there are various shift differentials that they receive. Again, that's current practice. So, this is good for them. As you know, there may be a change if we combine departments or whatever. This is good for them to have it as part of this policy, so that, you know, they're fairly covered, and this is something that they wanted to have happen. So, I'm happy to do that, and it, again, it all reflects current practice. I did change on Schedule A, the term dispatcher to Public Safety Communications Specialists. We have added one job in here, which is SUSE job, which is the Affordable Housing Coordinator under a grade seven. And on yours, I do have a corrected page that I give to you. We have added a position under grade seven as a senior Public Safety Communications Specialist. That would be for a person, they don't, they aren't using it today. Right now, they have a police officer which oversees the department, but if used, this would be an individual that would do the scheduling, et cetera, for that department, would make the call-ins and that kind of stuff. So, we wanted to make sure that we had that in there. Those are the changes to that schedule. So, those are all of the changes that I have made to the human resource policy.
Well, Jack or Scott, how did you come up with a grade seven for the Affordable Housing Coordinator? Did you look at other communities and?
Looked at other communities. We looked at pay levels. We looked at the other positions within the town to come up with what was fair. She's an individual that works very independently, and.
Oh, it's a great, it's a great hire. I mean, I fully support her, but I'm just curious how you came up with that particular grading.
You know, a lot of it came because of the independence of her work. She does the, she meets with the individuals, does the guiding, she does the organizing and all of the auctions.
She's been phenomenal.
Eventually by herself.
She's been phenomenal.
So, that's how we came up with it.
Okay.
Any questions on that particular policy? All right. So, the next is called an alcohol awareness training policy. This is for anybody who has a license with the town, and basically details what training they have to have in place and how they must document it. They're supposed to be doing the training now, anyway, but what this says is that it gives them four options for doing the training. They all belong to certain organizations that they can do the training through. They're accepted, they're all based for Massachusetts training. But what's new here is that it requires them onsite to list, and it's not a complicated listing, but to list the names of the employees who are trained, the name of the training program they went through, the date of the training, the date that it's valid, the date it expires, and their date of hire. So, that if Chuck was to go into a, an establishment, he can go to that document that's posted, look and see what he, they already have to have these documents in, on their files, anyway, so he can go and say, okay, Scott Bragdon says he's, you know, is due. Can I see that file? Because maybe they have an issue with Scott Bragdon on that thing. So, the requirement is, they have to be trained a minimum of every three years, or within three months of being a new employee. So, that, similar to what some other towns have, but I, you know, I've run this through with Chuck, and I think it's, you know, warranted.
And we're going to notify all of the establishments of this quickly?
We would need to do that.
Great.
You said they do it already now, it's just a matter of, the big difference is the posting.
They don't do the posting.
Not the posting, but the rest of the stuff they're doing.
But they are required to have the training. Yeah. So, the next is the snowplow damage mailbox policy. Bob has seen this. The intent here isn't to really change what you saw before. It puts it in the town format. There are some wording changes, so I, so it was, you know, needed that you saw it. It does say that if a mailbox is directly hit by a snowplow, they will replace the post with something similar, up to a maximum cost of 300. The reason I picked $300 was that I looked and saw that, you know, a nice wallpole woodworkers' post would cost that much. Now, again, this is only ones that are hit directly by the plow, which should be a very rare instance. Most damaged mailboxes are hit by snow cast off from the plow. That's a different standard, that we would either reimburse up to $60, or we supply them with a standard mailbox, which is, you know, like you would buy at Home Depot or something. In order to receive reimbursement, the homeowner must present a receipt for the materials purchased, and like the other policy, hardship cases or special cases, maybe you've got an elderly individual or something, needs some help, special consideration is up to the DPW director. Bob, anything you want to add?
All right.
Any questions on that? Okay. So, the last policy is also new. It's a policy of procedures for workers' compensation. The intent of this is not change anything that we're currently doing. This represents our current practices. But as we have hit a few recently, there's been a lot of questions, particularly on how it works during the first week of a person being out, and how they reimburse, because there potentially exists for them to get double-paid at some point if they're out long enough. You know, Marion, who deals with this a lot, and others thought it was good that we write this stuff down, so we're clear on it. So, that was why we did this, and that was the intent. I have run it by the people who have, who deal with this the most, to make sure that we're, we're doing this, so. But this may be the first time that you're seeing some of our practices that have been ongoing. So, I didn't know if you had any thoughts or questions on how this reads. The one thing that we do do, that some towns do and some towns don't, is that we do allow the person to use sick time during their first week. The law does not require that, but, and, but it would take them some period of time to get paid for that period of time. And we think if a person's injured on job, we felt strongly that the person should be able to continue to get paid. If they're out for 21 days or more, they will get paid for those days through workers' compensation, and the policy calls for us to reimburse for that, and then we would also put back their sick days that they've used. So, that's the one piece of it that's kind of a little unusual. Jack, I don't know.
No, I was just going to say, that's the part, and Marion can speak even more to this than I can, but that's the part that's just the most painful for us to administer, because we end up giving them, you know, it seems silly to me that somebody would get injured and then they don't get paid for the first week, because workers' comp doesn't require them to, the company to pay them until they've been out for more than 21 days. So, so that's why we allow, the town allows them to pay, to use sick time for the first five days. And then, if they're out for more than 21 days, we end up, that's always a little bit of a struggle with the employee to make sure that, you know, they don't, they don't then get their workers' compensation check for the first five days, whereas we've already paid them. So, there's a little challenge there.
So, one of the purposes of this is so that's all down and ready. It's online, we can give it to the employees as they need it, and it's much clearer than it was before.
Should we, based on the two incidents we've had, should we have language in this policy to address that?
Which two are you think?
Talking about when workers' compensation benefits expire.
Oh, that's a good point.
I mean, we've.
If they moved on to a long-term disability situation.
I'm wondering if we should have in here language that addresses the fact that they reached the cap under workers' comp.
Yeah.
What happens?
Well, as far as repaying the five days?
I know we know what happens, but should it be in the policy?
No, 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 no.
No, no, no.
Are you thinking of the letter we wrote to the?
Talking about what we recently experienced.
For reaching the cap on the medical bills, that issue, he's just saying add that to the bottom of the policy, so that, so that people know about it, you know.
Okay. Okay, I know what you mean. I can do that.
Yeah, I mean, I think we should. I mean, in the interest of full and fair disclosure, we shouldn't leave that open-ended.
Yeah.
Agree?
Absolutely. That's a good idea.
So, should I bring that back to you when I've rewritten that section?
I mean, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm okay with you just, I mean, we know what it is.
Yes.
I just, I'm a big fan of, you know, if we're going to have a policy, it should be as broad and fully disclosed as we can make it, and we've had that incident where there was, while it was handled correctly.
It was the first time we'd gone through it.
Right. Yeah.
So, we'll take that letter and we'll just, we'll put some of that wording in there.
Okay.
That's a, that's a great suggestion. I mean, that's the whole purpose of it, is to.
Yeah, absolutely.
Make it clearer for people, so add that.
Okay. Nice job, Scott. Thank you for doing all this. Scott? Scott, Scott? I can't go wrong. I can't.
No, it's good.
Thank you very much.
So, do we need to vote on that?
I would say yes. I would imagine we can just do a blanket vote to adopt all policies as presented as of this date.
All right. So, I'll move that we accept all updates and policies written by Scott Bragdon, as of this date.
I second. Further discussion?
None.
All in favor? We better be unanimous in this, or we got a problem.
Aye.
Aye.
Just as a point, you may already know this, but these policies are posted under the documents in the selection section of the website.
Okay, great.
And I'll get the updates out there as soon as I can get something posted for me. So, they're, they're out there for a bit.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thanks, Scott.
Nicely done.
Thank you, Scott. It's, we've had a, not only has Scott been doing this additional work, he's also been doing some insurance work, as always, on building a liability, as well as health insurance, which I'll talk about in a little while. But we've had a huge number of personnel challenges over the last couple of months, and I'm very thankful that Scott's here to help me get through those.
My pleasure.
Doing a great job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Thank you very much. Jack, why don't we catch the administr, do you want to do some of those action items?
Sure.
We're scheduled for a 7:30 hearing, so we've got 10 minutes here.
Sure. Actually, I think, and then we can, Bob had a couple other things, too, just to talk about, too.
Oh, you want to do that? Then we don't have to keep them?
Oh.
Your pleasure.
I'll go through, these will be real quick, and then we'll bring them up. We've had a volunteer, Mr. Nick Ademus, who is reapplying to be on the zoning bylaw study committee, term to expire, this is the one committee that expires in December, so this would expire on December 31st, 2013.
Do I have a motion?
I move that we appoint Robert Ademus to the zoning bylaw study committee, term expiring December 31st, 2013.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Likewise, we've had interest from Mr. Walter Byron, who you know from the Economic Development Committee. He has agreed to serve on the zoning bylaw study committee. Again, the term to expire December 31st, 2013.
I will also move that we appoint Walter Byron to the zoning bylaw study committee for a term expiring December 31st, 2013.
I will second, and just to comment, I think it's a really good thing that we're getting more of our Economic Development Committee members active in the zoning process, because they're very much involved in it, and that's a good thing. So, I'm glad they're stepping forward. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please vote to appoint John J., aka Jack McFeely, to the Norfolk County Advisory Board, term to expire June 30th, 2013.
I move that we appoint John J. McFeely to the Norfolk County Advisory Board, term to expire June 30th, 2013.
Is that a one-year appointment?
Yes, it is.
So, we have to do it again in July? We don't have an option?
I don't know. We've always done it.
But it's just, you're talking three months, I'm just wondering.
No, I know. Well, we've done others that way.
I think you could appoint him to both terms now, if you wanted to.
That's what I was hoping.
Do it to 14?
Why not?
Yeah.
All right. I'll amend my motion then to appoint John McFeely to the Norfolk County Advisory Board, term to expire June 30th, 2014.
Thank you. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Jack, if you're listening, thank you for volunteering to get back on that.
2014. And he did it before, and I know he enjoyed that, so.
Yes, he did, and, and, nice to have him back on it.
Yeah, he did, he was very enthusiastic about it, so. Please vote to approve a 5K charitable run walk for an organization called Miles for Melanoma. The event will be held on May 18th from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM, and begin and end at the H. L. of Day School. They will use the same route as the Jingle Bell Run. Chief Stone has approved the route and event.
I move that we approve the Miles for Melanoma event to be held on May 18th from 11:00 to 1:00 PM, beginning and ending at H. L. of Day School.
Chief is good?
Yes.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please vote to approve the request for the Norfolk Grange to hold their fourth annual Clean and Green Campaign on April 6th, 2013, at the Norfolk Grange. The rain date will be May 4th, and they request permission to use the Old Town Hall event. The Old Town Hall, in the event the Grange does not work. I don't know why the Grange would not work.
Okay. I'll make a motion and approve the request of the Norfolk Grange to hold their fourth annual Clean and Green Campaign on April 6th, 2013, at the Norfolk Grange.
A second. Last year, they got 2,200 pounds of litter. Wow. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we have a request from the Norfolk Community League to conduct their annual Community Day Run for Saturday, June 8th, 2013. This year's race will be run in memory of Taylor Manning, and they will strive to earn funds for Camp Jewel, a cause close to the Manning family's heart.
I move that we approve the request of the Norfolk Community League to conduct their annual Community Day Run on Saturday, June 8th, 2013.
Great, great cause. A second. All in favor?
Aye.
I know, Bob, would you join us up here?
Top of the evening to you, Bob.
Bob and I have spent some time on, on his budget in general. We've, unless, unless he's, unless he's going to change the thing, oh, here we go. We do have some Water Division rate information for you, but I guess just before we get into the water, you know, Bob is working diligently on his budget, which is very, obviously, probably the most complex in the town, maybe other than the school, but he is working, sometimes when we do the water rates, we also approve the trash rates, and I think we'd like to spend, because there's been some flexibility, some movement in the recycling rates, et cetera, I think we'd just like to ask your permission to hold off on talking about the trash, the final trash rates, you know, the recycling rates for, until, for a couple, until our next meeting. So, focus on water tonight. If that's all right with you.
Okay with you, Scott?
It's okay with me. You're Rob anyways, that's great.
Yeah, that's, it was, it was probably in our best interest to get it through tonight, but.
Don't be so sure. Well, we still have a couple of minutes.
Yeah, was there, there was something else we wanted to talk about? Was there, or maybe it was just the trash, recycling?
No, I gave you, just in case you wanted an update on the snow budget or something like that, that.
With the storm coming on Friday?
I think Monday might be a better day.
Hold off on that, too.
Let's see what happens on Friday.
Mr. Bragdon was spreading rumors that there's going to be a foot of snow on Friday, but.
Friday to Saturday now. It doesn't, it's not all on Friday.
It's good to share. Yeah.
Some, yeah, they're still up in the air, I think, but it's going to be snow.
It'll be what it'll be. We still have, we can't start that till 7:30.
I got a couple of quick town administrator items, if you want.
Well, we can do a quick, quick, just quick discussion on the election and town meeting dates, I mean, that's a quickie.
The, as you know, as I'm sure everybody knows, especially Mr. Winslow, Senator Kerry has taken the Secretary of State's seat, so we now have an interim senator, and the Secretary of State and the governor have called for a primary election on April 30th for the new state senator, and then a general election on June 25th. That affects us, because our town election is May 1st, and our town, and our, that would then lead our annual town meeting to be seven days later, so May 8th. No.
No.
May 7th, and then May 14th.
Correct.
I had to look at Marion to get my dates right. So, the question is, and, and I don't, I don't think we want to vote this tonight, because I haven't seen whether or not, I mean, we could certainly head in that direction, but the Secretary of State has filed legislation, I understand the House and Senate have approved it, but I don't think the governor has signed off on it yet, legislation allowing towns to change their annual town meeting, even if it's embedded in their bylaws like ours is. So, I believe we will be able to change our meeting date, sorry, our election, to April 30th, so that we would have it on the same day as the primary.
April 30th, is that what you said? Okay.
Sorry, I should have said April 30th.
Well, seeing as we don't meet until, you know, for another, because of the school vacation for three weeks, why don't, why don't we vote it subject to approval by the, by, or subject to signature of the governor? Because everything I've heard, and I think we've all heard the same thing, that, that's going to be the deal. And it makes all the sense in the world. I mean, to hold two elections a week apart costs us, what, about 3,500 bucks?
Yeah, it would just be frustrating.
And confusion. And this, this way. And this, this way, everybody can come on one date and have the town election and the special election at the same time. And, and it moves our town meeting up too, which I think is a good thing, so.
Well, by bylaw, it doesn't automatically, I just, I say that only because.
I know.
So I assume you'd want to, but, okay.
Yeah.
Leave it at that.
Well, I'm, I'm speaking for me. How do you feel?
About moving the, moving the election, I think makes.
No, the town, the town meeting.
Yeah, moving the town election is a no-brainer.
And then when, when, so the town meeting would be when, then?
The 7th.
The 7th.
As opposed to the 14th. 7th and 8th as opposed to the 14th and 15th.
So I think the question in my mind, anyway, is do you want to have it a week after the election, like it normally is?
Right.
Or do you want to have it be the second Tuesday in May, like it normally is? Probably a week after, I think, would be.
Because nor- normally, I mean, historically, our election has always been the first Tuesday in May.
Right.
Which is why the bylaws written accordingly, but you could argue that it's also been a week after the election.
Yeah.
I, I think it makes sense to have it on the 7th, personally. And the school's available, right, Marion?
Yes.
7th and 8th is available?
Yes.
That's fine.
You okay with that?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
You okay with that, Jack?
I'm fine, yeah.
I mean, does that, I wouldn't think that week would shorten the process of any significance. I mean, okay. Well, how about, we make a motion to make those appropriate changes, subject to signature of the governor.
Okay. So I move that we move our town election to April 30th, subject to the approval, signature and approval by the governor, and our town meeting will be held on February, oh, February, May 7th.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Great.
Well, now we're a minute late. We have the water hearing this evening. The Board of Selectmen, Licensing Board for the Town of Norfolk, will conduct a public hearing under the provisions of Chapter 101 of the Acts of 2004, Section 7, to determine the water budget for fiscal year 14, and set prices and rates for usage of the water system. This hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, February 5th, 2013, at 7:30 p.m. in Room 124, Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass. Signed, Norfolk Board of Selectmen. We apologize, we are two minutes late on that hearing. But Mr. McGee, the floor is yours.
Thank you. As you know, this time each year, as we do the rates, one of the first things that we need to come up with is very close to a water budget. You really can't do one without the other. I put the budget in front of you, I probably could have just given you the bottom line, and it is on one of those pieces of paper. Because in doing the rates, you need to project revenues. And so putting one before the other, you know, the third page of this water budget really has the bottom line. You can see the three columns here where it has FY 13, the budget that we're operating, and now on FY 14 is our proposed budget. And you can see that the math on the third column, bottom line is that with this proposed budget, where we should end up with a surplus of $41,000, I mean, I'm sorry, $41,000, it's in parentheses there.
That's right. Forty-one, nine fifty-four, yeah.
So, you know, that being good news, we propose no rate increases or fee increases for FY 14. The piece of paper that you have in front of you, by the way, I, I scratched some notes on it, so it was copied, you got my notes, nope, my notes on that, too.
I, I got a couple of questions for you, Bob. We, we have some savings in the water department this year, thanks to the solar array. How much, and maybe I'm just not seeing it, how, how much do we have set aside for capital?
Well, we don't.
Is it not on here? I don't see it.
No, it isn't. We do have special projects in there, Jim, that we have been the last couple of years, and I kept in tune with for different interconnections and whatever, the special projects, which, but you don't see any capital projects introduced there.
I don't think you'll see savings from the solar project in the water division, because the way we prioritize the credits from Enstar, it's going to the general fund first.
But there are lower costs overall, operationally for the town, so a proportion of that would have to go to the water department, wouldn't it?
No, because, because our expenses for electricity is still the same, but then we get a credit back for the energy that's generated. And that those genera, those credits that are generated, we end up putting back, we take all of our bills, and there's literally, you know, probably 60 different bills, and we prioritize those. Literally, the water department's down the bottom, because the, the expenses for the solar project and the land owned, is owned by the general fund. So we're getting credits in the general fund before they go to the water department.
I thought we were spreading those out proportionate to the bills.
Well, we are in the general fund, but not in the enterprise fund. I don't, I don't, the water fund has no contribution to the solar project, so I don't know why.
But they have an expense, they have an electrical expense for the pumps.
They do.
And so there's a bill for that.
Yep.
That's paid for out of the enterprise fund.
Yep.
So why wouldn't the credits for that go back to the enterprise fund?
Because we don't, we don't generate, we don't, we use more power than the, than the solar panels generate, so.
Right. But whether it's 30% or 20%, I mean, I understand it doesn't pay all the bills, but it, it pays a portion, I thought we were allocating a portion of that, it's not a trick question.
No, I know.
I thought we were, we were allocating a portion of that to each of our expenditures for town government, as it relates to electricity. So, so much for Town Hall. I understand when it's all said and done, it's in one, one big account. I mean, I understand that, I understand it's all in the general account. But why isn't a portion of that allocated over to the enterprise fund for the electrical expenses associated with the pumps? Which is a fairly substantial number.
I've never, I honestly, I don't, I don't recall ever having that conversation. And I don't see, I personally don't see why the enterprise fund, again, they, they didn't make the investment in the property, they didn't make the investment, there was no investment from the water department to create the solar fields. It's not on a water department property.
But I think to your point, they, they have electricity bills part of the time.
Okay, then it gets into a, and, and you're right, we, we didn't have this discussion. But, you know, when you and I were talking this morning, and I was thinking more about this, if, and I don't know, I'm, I'm not arguing that there's a right or wrong answer to this, it's just, it's a question that.
I'm not saying we couldn't do it.
Yeah, it's, it's a question, I think it's a fair one to ask.
Yeah.
If, we, we didn't expense, this isn't a sort of a corporate capital expenditure where there's a recouping of that capital investment. We, we didn't, and it has no point, anyway, in, in, you know, government to do it that way. So we, we didn't do it into the normal sort of corporate component where there's a recapturing of the expense. What we're doing is we're, we're getting a reduced cost, if you will, for all of our electricity across the board, and you're allocating it to different departments based on their usage. One of those components is, in fact, the water department. So to me, logically, it would seem that if their bill is 20% less, that that should be reflected and allocated back, as opposed to just all of it going over to the general account.
I guess it's just a different philosophy than, I mean, we have, we have a whole bunch of general, we have a whole bunch of special revenue funds.
Right, I know.
So we haven't done that theory on any of the.
But you, you haven't, you have, I, I can't think of, maybe there is one, tell me, but I, I can't think of another general revenue item that is a specific cost to the water department that isn't reflected within the enterprise fund. I can't think of one.
Say that again? Sorry, I didn't.
Well, I, I know you don't need to do it in terms of, I mean, everything is in the general account, with the exception, the enterprise fund, which is a, which is supported by the water takers. It's walled off, if you will, from the operations of the rest of the town. And it has expenses, and it has revenue to offset those expenses, reflecting in your budget. One of those expenses is electricity. And the cost of that electricity has gone down as a result, proportionately, as a result of the solar field, irrelevant of the cap, from where the capital came to invest in it, because we don't recoup that capital. So to me, that would be indifferent. Corporate, yes, corporate America, absolutely. But, but because of the, you know, the lack of tax benefits and so on, there's no reason to do that in government, so we don't do that.
I guess I, I look at it differently. There's, there's two, there's two pros, there's two energy uses going on here. There's the energy usage by all the departments, you know, water department, general fund, recreation.
Right.
Cafeteria, you know, all the special revenue funds we have. And then there's also the energy being generated at the solar fields. We're still paying the same energy costs on, for all of our usage in the departments. We're, we are getting a benefit, it's like, it's like a lease payment, we're getting a benefit from all the energy that's produced on the solar fields. That's why it was always made, you know, that, that revenue is, or credits is being kept in the general fund, because it's a lease with the general, between the general fund and Constellation Energy. It's not directly associated with how much energy is used by each of the departments.
But that's how you reallocate it back to the, to the departments you're talking about, though, right? You're taking that, you give them a pseudo credit.
That's the way Enstar does it, is end, end up giving us.
Get a credit on every bill.
Well, yeah, they'd give us a credit on the first bill until it goes down to zero, and then they give us a credit on the next bill till it goes down to zero.
Jim's just saying, applies on it to the water.
But here's the reason why I ask it, because to me, and it may not be quite the same, so I, I could be, you could argue me out of it, I guess, but we did something similar to that with the schools. When we made the adjustment of a couple hundred thousand dollars, we took on the cost, knowing the savings, and gave them the credit, and in essence, gave them $200,000 more in their budget.
Uh.
How is that?
I'd have to, have to look at that one with you. I, I, look at that one, I mean, that was different. I mean, that was, we had some, so many unknowns about how much that $200,000.
And we took all the risk. It was, it was a fair deal. I'm not, I'm not challenging the deal. I'm talking about the process.
I guess I'm still, and again, this, this is something that, you know, we can, we can alter this at any time. And we haven't started getting the credits yet, that's part of the frustration.
Here's, here's the reason I'm asking it. So maybe, and I should have probably prefaced it by this, you, you have, do you know how much you have, what do you have potentially available for capital investment in the water, in the enterprise, in the water division?
That would be reflected by the retained earnings.
Right. How much is that?
On the front page, $390,000.
And also, 300 and just under $400,000 at this time.
And then another, you're hoping next year to get another $41,000, $42,000?
How do you, where would that come from?
Well, if you underspent, if you, if you cut a level budget, you'd get another $42,000. What I'm, what I'm asking, is we, we know we have, we have, we have a need for a new well.
Right.
We, we know we have expenses that are coming, I'm not suggesting we lower things, that's not my point of this conversation. I'm looking to get more revenue in. That's, I guess, where I'm going with this.
In, into the enterprise.
Into the enterprise fund, for capital investment. That's what I'm trying to find. Because I know we've got some, you know, we're going to have some heavy expense. And, and if there's a, what I, what I don't want to do, if we can help it, is put that, you know, we have borrowed, I think we have $400,000 and some odd thousand dollars of outstanding obligation right now. That falls on the back of the water takers. And I'm trying to lessen that burden by getting more funds, you know, additional revenue into the water department, that will create more surplus, that will allow us more capital investment, and not have to borrow, or borrow less, maybe is another way to say it, to ease some of the burden that we know is coming down the line, because wells are not cheap.
I'm with you on that. Yeah.
So that's where I was going with this. So, so, you know, if, if there's a way we can get a little bit more, hold the budget, you know, and get a little bit more surplus out of the budget, so that it can go towards some of the capital needs that we have. Because we do have infrastructure needs in that system. And we've talked about it a lot. I should have prefaced the conversation with that. I apologize.
No, it's fine. I mean, I would just, you know, our electrical expenses for the water department are 78, 80, 80, about $80,000.
So it's not meaningful, what you're telling me?
It's not, it's not going to be a huge credit. I mean, it's going to, you know, it'll be a few thousand dollars.
Okay.
But it's not going to swing.
No. I, I thought it would be substantially more than that. But I was just taking an uninformed guess. Okay.
No, I, I'm not, you know, it, I mean, it'd be.
It's not worth going through, I know, I know the accounting process, it's not worth creating that kind of a workload to do that for a couple of thousand dollars. It's not, you know, it's not a fair trade. So I, I thought it was a bigger number than.
No, we can, I mean, we can certainly tweak this as we complete, you know, go through the budget more this year. You know, we'll, we'll definitely look at this some more. This isn't, this isn't the final EPW budget, so.
Well, just, just my two cents worth. I mean, I'm, I don't want to raise any rates, but I, I do want to try and create more surplus out of this operational budget to meet some of the capital needs that we know are coming down the line. So we just, I mean, you're going to have to borrow to do a well, anyway, assuming we don't do a deal with the state or something like that. But we can borrow less.
There's a few other things, too, just so you may be aware of, there's a side of the $398,000, or say $399,000 that was certified, that was back in July.
Right.
Now we're into a new budget, and that's six months later, there's, you know, whatever there is after billing that's going on. But there's also another $92,000 plus, separated out of there from new service development, those are the new connection fees, subdivisions that are going online, and houses that are getting connected up, and other people that are tapping into our water system, and so forth. So there's, there's that. So you got, you can look at that, like you have $400,000, you have $92,000 in new service fee development fees in, in the bank. And you also have money that we gave back last year. Well, actually, wouldn't that be, money that we gave back at the end of FY 12 would be reflected in the.
Part of your 398.
Yeah. But you've, you've also got payments coming in on the advances we made in repairing people's leaks and things of that nature, which I would think that should be reasonably substantial now.
But just to support what you're saying, we've kind of, we really haven't presented any serious capital projects, and not only, it was only three years ago that we only had $50,000 in retained earnings, and we built ourselves up to this. So it was nice that the water department kind of fell asleep a little bit. And my understanding also is that you can only, if you have a budget of, say, $1.5 million, and you have more than 20% retained earnings, and I'm not so sure of this, I think that either you spend that money for improvements, or you do lower the rates. I think you can make an argument that you can save up, because you're right about the source, development.
Well, in, in our case, we, we have a need, and the states, the state's aware of that, I think.
Yeah.
So I, I don't think you'd have a hard case defending, holding those retained earnings. What's, you may have told me this, Bob, but I don't remember, what, what's a new well go? What's it going to cost us? I know it's a five-year deal, but how long, what's?
I'm gonna guess one point five million. Then, you know, that's, um, then there's land acquisition and so forth, so all the things that we can save on.
So you're including land acquisition in that?
I'm not so sure.
Oh, okay. Well, it's over a million dollars, it's over a million dollars anyway.
It is.
Yeah.
Depends on what you buy for land, you know, by a freehold piece of property.
If we could use land we have.
Right.
Yeah, you know, there's still, there's always, every time there's a big project going on, we're always looking at to see if, you know, there's, you know, a big subdivision or something, we're always looking to see if there's, uh, some mutually beneficial deal we can make with a developer. Um, there's a couple of projects going on that we're, hopefully, something may come out of that.
Okay. Thanks. Sorry to digress.
Uh, no, it's a good discussion. Um, there are still, you know, I think Bob touched on it a little bit, but, uh, we still do have some line items in there. Um, you know, fifty thousand dollars for unexpected, unforeseen expenses. We've carried that over from the prior year. Fortunately, we haven't had to dip into that in the last couple of years. So that's a good safety net for us. And then, uh, Bob does have seventy-five thousand dollars budgeted for projects during the year. Um, before we get through the budget process, we'll obviously identify what those projects will be. But that's a number, again, we're carrying forward from the year before. Um, we will have more discussions with you during the budget process about Bob's ideas of, uh, uh, you know, moving forward with our plans of, uh, taking over some of the duties of the wells, uh, and the pumps, and having our employees manage those rather than having consulting, consultants do it. And, uh, we've had some discussions about it. I think Bob's got a great plan to move forward on that, and, uh, we'll have that discussion with you. Some more as we go forward here.
How are we doing on that pumping station?
Which one?
The one over, uh, off of.
Spruce and Gold Street.
The Spruce and Gold Street. And we just had, uh, we had a, it was a, one of the satellite pumps seized. And we had that rebuilt, and it came back to yield even greater, um, water for us. So, uh, so far, so good. Um, you know, there's, and again, in theory, that the more you clean wells, the more they reseed a little bit, and then you're, it's almost like a three-year plan to clean, you know, clean the wells and... But in this particular case, one of the pistons seized, so it was, um, a matter of replacing that, cleaning it. And then we cleaned everything else, because we had money left over from our interconnections that we had, um, budgeted last year with Franklin. That was done. So that came in below budget, and so we had the money to spend on it, Jim, so it worked out fine.
Okay. Scott, questions?
Any questions?
I think, to your point, Jim, we certainly have, continuing to explore everything, every option we can for a new source. You know, we just, we want, we don't need the water today, but we need the redundancy. You know, in case something catastrophic does happen to one of our two wells, uh, it's, we'd be in a much better place if we had three, so. And as we continue to develop in town, we eventually will need the water, so it's, I'm trying to stay ahead of it.
Okay. So you're proposing no changes? Does anyone in the audience, all two of you, have any comments regarding the water rates?
I, I've moved that we keep the water rates the same as they were last year.
I will second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. McGee.
Sorry to-
Before Bob would leave, could I ask a question?
Sure. We haven't closed the hearing yet, Bob, so it's very appropriate. You got a microphone?
Is it a water question?
All right. Is it a water question?
So, um, we close the hearing.
I don't, we, let me close the hearing. Any other further discussion? Okay. We are closing the hearing at eight, seven fifty, whatever, seven fifty-two. Mr. Nickodinas.
My question is, uh, among other things, the Economic Development Committee, uh, would like to know whether there's anything they could do in the way of assistance, information gathering, whatever, working, to discover how, uh, we could implement a stormwater utility service user fee program in the town center. The piping's there, everything's there, there are some upgrades that would need to happen. And it was an approved district in two thousand and ten, but we haven't gone forward to allow it to be implemented.
You're right.
And, uh, the Economic Development Committee thinks it would be a good thing to at least reopen the issues involved and find out what it would take to allow that implementation to occur, because it would facilitate a higher level of development in town center if it were allowed to be used.
Agreed. Bob?
I agree. I see no reason why we shouldn't go forward with that, have it in place in the event that we strike it rich and have some development in this town, in the center of town.
But we have five connected now that are using it and have been since nineteen ninety-six. And there's no user fee, so they're not paying for it.
Go for it. It's been, I know, it's probably our fault here. We've, we've talked about this for years now, Bob, you're right, and we haven't done anything about it, so.
Do you, I mean, I don't know if this is a question to ask on the spot, but, I mean, for the people that are connected already, is it, is it reasonable based on those agreements that were made at the time to, to have a fee now?
I don't know that answer. I only know that it's an existing condition. I know that all of the properties that are connected have substantially benefited from being allowed to use it, because they otherwise would have had to close their facilities.
Hmm.
None of them could have been allowed to operate without that stormwater connection.
Was there an agreement signed? I mean, this, you said this goes back into the nineties?
I have no knowledge of anything, except that I know there's five connections.
And this goes back into the nineties?
Ninety-six is when the stormwater utility system became operable.
But when did they, when did they?
I don't, all I know is that there are five connected conditions.
Because I, I didn't know that.
Yeah. And some of them were connected, uh, and that has allowed them to develop or operate what they have today.
Well, can we, I would assume, Bob, would it be in your department? I mean, there have to be some agreements, I would think, in place to have allowed that.
In the past?
Yeah.
I can't speak for what happened in the past, but quite honestly, I just, I don't understand the difficulty in going forward and establishing a fee if we can establish a methodology. In a community that I did work in, we had a utility license.
Right.
For instance, if you lived in a neighborhood and you had, uh, a hardship where your basement was flooding all the time, and you needed relief from that, you just didn't have the percolation outside your foundation where you could tap into our waters, into our drainage system. The homeowner would, um, apply for it, they would pay for the installation, and we would charge them a fee. We would keep that house on record for periodical inspections, to make sure that they're not emptying their washing machine or anything like that, and it's just for relief for basements. And that was one simple instance, but it didn't take a lot to do. It was, it was rather simple. So I, I really don't see the difficulty in moving forward.
No, I, I don't either. My only, my only question is, I, I was not aware that we had five establishments, not that I should be or shouldn't be, but I, it hasn't been-
Was the town hall one of them, Bob?
Jack, it hasn't been in your-
They're all private properties.
Can you name it? I don't know, maybe?
And then you all five of them.
Well, I don't, let Bob know.
No commercial properties, though.
We don't need to do that.
Oh, okay.
They're all commercial properties.
We, we don't need to get into that level of detail now, because we don't know what the circumstances were.
Right.
So, um, we need to find that out.
We do know some of the circumstances.
Okay. Well, can you share that with Bob? And then, Bob, you can let us know.
Absolutely.
Or I'd, I'd like to actually sit down and hear about this too. Maybe we can meet down at DPW and, because I was not aware that we had anyone hooked up to that.
And these were all hardship connections that happened long before.
Right. Which is a good thing, but it, it shouldn't be at the town's expense.
I don't disagree. I'm just letting you know that it exists, and we have users, and user fees are unreasonable things to discover what they could be. And the system is there, infrastructure-wise, to be operated as it is. And if you want to expand it to allow the rest of town center to use it, you have three other little capital improvements that need to get dealt with.
You made the sale.
Well, I got a question for you then. How does that, how does that, um, reflect on the new stormwater permit? I think the acronym for it is SWME, the S W, there's a new stormwater permit out. Are you familiar with it?
No, I'm not.
I don't know if it's been accepted yet, but it, it comes with regulations and so forth. And, um, I don't know if it would, if it touches on any of what we're talking about, but that would be the first line of business.
We were advised, you and Butcher, your predecessor and others, uh, by the engineering team that was dealing with that, that these things were on the horizon to be dealt with as a basis for any kind of user fee development, because there's two or three things that, um, weren't, quote, uh, functioning if, if full use was allowed to date, and would have to be improved.
Well, let's do this. I mean, we, we agree we need to do it. So let's, you're around, Bob. You, two of you set up a time, if, if you just let me know if I can get there, or Scott? We can always, give us enough advance, we can post it. Um, certainly, we should pursue this. But let's see if we can dig up some data. You share those five names with Bob.
Well, yeah, I, the data is, is all there.
Well, if there are any agreements in place, Bob.
On that, I don't know.
Well, that's what I'm, you know, were there agreements signed between the town and the users that we don't know about?
Yep.
Because we can't go off and do things that's in violation of an agreement that was signed long before any of our time.
It's through the zoning board, right? Wasn't it? With agreements through the selectmen, I thought, if I-
I don't have any idea of, there are some historic and some add-ons that occurred. And I don't know any of the paperwork that transpired in that, uh, issue.
Let's get our facts.
Yep.
And we'll figure it out.
Okay.
Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Charles.
Sounds like you got your fall, winter cold.
You look nice tonight, Bob, by the way.
In, in that case, maybe we'll suggest you don't come up to the table.
I gotta say, the town hall is a breeding ground of, uh, flu and-
Um, Walter, welcome, and Marie, welcome. Um, and Bob, thank you for joining us tonight. And Walter, you and Bob were sworn in, or not sworn in, but voted into the zoning bylaw study committee this evening, so don't forget to get sworn in.
I get to see Sean to get sworn in.
Great, thank you. Thanks for volunteering. Nice to have economic folks on that.
Very timely. There's a meeting tomorrow night.
Perfect. Well, you can attend, you can't vote if you don't get sworn in, so.
I can get sworn in.
Okay. All right. Bob? You're on.
Okay. Uh, what's involved with our discussion tonight was to, for the Economic Development Committee to understand how they could, uh, participate in facilitating issues that we think would improve, um, development capability within the town of Norfolk. And, and if that requires actions at the town meeting for zoning bylaw or other issues, we kind of wanted to get started, because we think that any town meeting agenda items need to be established as articles before the end of the month of February.
Correct. What's the, is it twenty-first?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
It's a, it's a hard deadline this year.
As every year.
So, um, under those situations, uh, we wanted, the Economic Development Committee wanted to inspire and participate where we could in at least, uh, telling the selectmen and getting feedback from you folks regarding two articles that were defeated at the Fall Town Meeting that we would consider reintroducing at the Spring Town Meeting. And one of them was Article Ten, which dealt with the bedrooms per lot issue, which we think there was a lot of confusion, and that needs to be clarified and reconsidered. And the other one that would be, we've talked with the property owner, and he's still interested, is the, uh, expanding of the B-one district to include the Kelly property. So that was Article Sixteen.
I agree. You should bring them back, bring them both back.
Those two we were going to go forward with unless there was a reason not to.
Can I offer a thought?
Yep.
Um, I, I think one of the things that, and this is not to the Economic Development Committee, I'd say it to all of us. All of those, all of the hard work that was done in bringing those articles forward, we did, we need to, I would suggest that whether it's you folks or us, or collectively, I think it would be helpful to people before we get into those discussions, to tell folks what this is all about. How, because those all tied together. And, and what happened was, they, they viewed them individually, not understanding how they connected, and what the overall vision and methodology was in getting to where you were. So it, it, they became sort of independently arbitrary without understanding how they all fit together. So this time, we, before we even get into those articles, someone, you guys, or us, or we do it together, or whatever, we should get up and make it more, make it more clearer, I guess that's the right, sorry. Make it clearer to people what, what this is all about, and how it comes together. Because when you look at these individually, and, and we should desperately try not to amend them on town floor.
Yep.
I, I mean, that only adds to the confusion, and rightfully so. And even though the change was minor in implementation, it was major in impact. Because it just, and I understand that. People just did not understand how that all worked, and that was our fault. We, we didn't do a good job of packaging that. I shouldn't say packaging, informing. It's just really telling folks what it's all about, so. Thank you for indulging me in that.
Our second, um, item of interest was to find out-
So you're gonna do that, just so we're, you're gonna, okay.
We will do that, and, and we've actually had some discussions with participants and people that attended the Fall Town Meeting to sort of find out where the anxiety was on some of that. And, and we think we have an understanding in some cases. And we also think that there was a, a lack of, of, um, support shown from some of the proponents that, that we could correct this next time.
Right. People have to speak up for their own causes. Yeah.
We were interested in knowing whether there's anything the Economic Development Committee could do to assist slash inspire consideration sometime in the future of the Bourbon Street Bridge.
Donate a million and a half dollars, it'd be a good start. There's no lack of enthusiasm for what it provides. I'm, I'm speaking for me, and Scott, I'll, you know, conceptually, it's hard to argue with the benefits associated with that. The issue is funding.
Right. And we could do some research if it would be useful, just as an added element of it. Uh, we understand that there are certain, um, financing programs that could be considered for the areas involved called either business improvement financing, or district improvement financing, or all of that. I don't know what it all is, but apparently there are methods that can be implemented where the, uh, properties and or areas that are gonna benefit from this can receive some sort of, uh, change in, in participation financially. And I, we could do some research to find out what all that means.
Scott?
Yeah, um, was that what they talked about, like Ms. McGuire, she talked about some of that business, you know, you can get some money, but I, I think we apply for the grants, but from what I hear from people too, it's, if it didn't cost us any money, it makes perfect sense.
I think it's gonna cost us, it's a question of can we get it so that it won't cost the citizens of Norfolk only the beneficiaries of the property development? And if that's possible, then we see that as being something that is much more acceptable to the community at large.
With the, with the exception of, of, and I'm only speaking for me, with, with the exception of how any particular rebutter might feel towards that, taking that off the table, because that's a very individualistic perspective, and we have to understand and respect that. My only view, I, I believe that philosophically, that bridge is a good thing for the town. But I do not want to see it paid for by the taxpayers. Norfolk taxpayers. Yeah. I, I mean-
You wouldn't be opposed to the business community paying for it.
I, if you, if you, absolutely, how could you? I mean, if, you know, if, if we could create partnerships, and, and I know we attempted, if, if we could create partnerships with those that would, in theory, benefit from that, and they were willing to participate in the process, how could you argue against that, as long as it could get funded? But i- in terms of it becoming a burden to the taxpayers, I do not favor that. Walter, yeah, sure.
Yeah, well, um, we're of the same mind, I think, Jim. And we're trying to figure out if there is a Plan B. And we heard through the grapevine that Dan Winslow had created one version of the Plan B, which was a combination grant and loan.
Mm-hmm.
The numbers of which we heard, again, not confirmed, but was a million dollar grant and a two million dollar loan.
Yeah. That was in the bond bill. It just, we just didn't, the governor didn't see fit for us to be part of the distribution.
Right. But we understood that, um, that if Dan pressed him, he would sign that. And we would get the million bucks plus the two million dollar loan. Now, that may not be true, but that's what we understood.
That is entirely new news to me.
Yeah, well, that's-
Did you?
I, I never heard it was dead, so I, you know, it's, it's, the transportation bond bill is always subject to the governor's approval, so there's...
Let's just assume for the moment that that were to be possible.
Sure.
Now we're talking a two million dollar loan we have to fund somehow.
Mm-hmm.
Twenty years typically is the life of those things.
It was twenty years, zero percent.
Right. So that's a hundred thousand dollars a year. So we need to come up with an incremental hundred thousand dollars a year of tax revenue from the business community that would sustain that and benefit from it.
Mm-hmm.
That's not totally out of the question. I mean, you think about a hundred thousand dollars of tax revenue, it, it might be possible to round up enough support to get that, uh, supported.
I think it would be. I, I think it is absolutely within reach. I agree with you.
So, um, we'd like to keep digging in that field, if that's, uh-
Um, I guess, maybe, I, maybe, and I'm the eternal optimist, but for some reason, I, I thought we were out of the picture for that.
Well, we may be. It, it's just that-
Worth checking, right?
It's worth checking.
Well, sure.
Because if, if, that's still there, and all it takes is the governor's signature, which is the rumor that we heard, gosh, I mean, whether we exercise it or not, it'd be great to get a signature on the darn bill.
Well, Jack, can, can you clarify for me? I, I thought, I know that the governor did make some awards on that bond bill. There was a list of-
No, you're, I think you're thinking of the Massworks grant. Those were, those were the awards.
I am. You're correct. I'm thinking of the Massworks grant. You are correct. Thank you.
I mean, we'd have to get about nine million dollars worth of development, if my math is right, to get.
At our current tax rate? It would be-
Oh, no. I'm sorry. I'm underestimating our tax rate. Oh, no. I'm sorry. I'm underestimating our tax rate.
Seventeen, what, 10?
Good news is our tax rate's high.
Why'd you tell?
Seven and a half?
Six. Yeah, six to seven.
That's not out of reach.
It's not out of reach, when you think about the potential.
But you're looking at it only in terms of evaluation, you know, there are other ways that you could get that revenue.
Oh, yeah. I'm just looking at pure real estate tax.
Pure, yeah. There are other ways you could do that.
Yeah. I mean, we, you know, we can, even if Dan's item is still not available, there, you know, Mr. Nick Ademas talked about was diff, there's diff funding, you know, where we can, where we can, at town meeting level, basically say, we're gonna use future tax rep, future incremental tax revenues to fund this project.
If that, some combination of those figures are possible, it's gonna take a lot of effort on the part of all of us to really make this thing happen, because clearly, the bridge ferry isn't coming along with $3 million for us. We tried putting our teeth under the pillow, and the bridge ferry isn't gonna respond. Time and again, I don't have too many teeth left, so. So, we've gotta try something else. And I think it's gonna take a lot of work on all our parts.
Well, let's find out where this is with the governor. I guess I prematurely exiled that opportunity.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's some other loose ends that we need to work on, too. It's just, I mean, some of the developers, the budding developers have changed their philosophy. You know, they've gone more residential than the potential of commercial, I think.
Well, at least in one case, that's the case.
Related to that, you know, the changes that we had proposed for the MBTA parking lot would impact what he's doing, so I think we need to make sure that we're, we can, you know, we take that into consideration.
Right, yeah. Well, there are three main abutters there, so we really need to talk to all three. I know I spoke to one of the other abutters who isn't in favor, for obvious reasons, which are very understandable, and we'd have to talk that through with him.
Mm-hmm.
But yes, I, Scott?
No, I have no problems with that.
Anything you can do that would help, there is no harm, there's no downside, because there is, there is an economic benefit to that, if we could do it in a way that it didn't fall back on the taxpayers.
Another topic that has come up that we just wanted to let the selectmen know about, and if they want to comment on it, they can, or later, we have a district in town called the C1 district.
We know it well.
Thanks, Bob. We have been approached by a gentleman called Chips Transport, and they would like a zoning change to allow the storage of usable vehicles on a property in the off-highway district of the C1 area.
Yeah, I'm aware of it.
So, that would be a zoning article for fall, for the spring town meeting, unless there's a reason not to. And so, I just wanted you to be aware of it. We've assumed that the zoning bylaw study committee can look into that. It, the only thing that I can say that could be a slight issue, and that would be determined by the zoning bylaw study committee and so forth, is that the off-highway district on Pine Street opposite Four Kicks and Joe Friends is probably going to be the toughest place to functionally see something like that happen.
Well, it's open.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And there would be a lot of restrictions, and I did talk with the developer about it, and he recognized that those restrictions would be part of any special permit that was created to allow this to occur. And I said, screening and landscaping and full invisibility would be a requirement, and if he had a problem with that, then he was talking to the wrong person. And he said he didn't have a requirement.
It was, I thought the intent was on the other side.
His intent is Shire Park.
That's what I thought.
Yeah, but the issue here is, and I gave you this map for this reason, there are four off-highway areas, and if you create a zoning bylaw that allows a use in an off-highway area, it could occur in any one of those four unless you were to specifically label the four.
I was gonna say, you can designate those independently.
Well, we would have to then create off-highways A, B, C, and D.
Right, which you could do.
Which you could do.
Yeah.
You probably want to, right?
Well, again, that's what was in the back of my mind, but I kind of wanted you, the selectmen, just to sort of be aware of the strategy that would go forward, because this has to be a zoning bylaw that's created in the next two weeks.
Right.
At least for warrant article submission, not necessarily final edit.
I mean, I would hope you would pursue that. I think...
If you need a color map, I can give you one.
I don't.
No, I know, I have an idea.
We know the area well. I actually drove down in that area where we had, because Jack and I had talked about this, and I think you'd let all of us, I think all of us know about this.
Talking down by CEI.
Yeah. And I didn't anticipate it going across from Four Kicks. I understood to be in Shire, because I think Four Kicks would be a problem. I think that...
Well, I wanted to bring up the pros and cons, just because I don't think you can just allow it in any off-highway.
I had made the assumption that we were gonna parcel that out, and I'm, we're on the same page.
There is one other request that has come to the Economic Development Committee, but we haven't got an opinion on it and haven't gone forward, so I thought I'd introduce it to the selectmen and just let you think about it. You don't have to react necessarily. But a developer has asked whether or not the town would be willing to consider allowing residential development in the C1 district in the off-highway areas.
Really? I hadn't heard that one.
Yeah.
Along 1A, or?
I didn't ask where. I was only told that they wanted the ability to be considered as they do in the B1.
Right. They want mixed, they want mixed use?
Pardon?
They want mixed use?
I don't know. I haven't gotten any further than that, because it had never been something that I had heard, and I said I would start to think about it. It, there is two developers interested, so it, one of those things, but I haven't taken it any further, because we've never considered it before in the C1 district.
In your, in your map, is, oh, is, so these are the C, this is the C1 district, right? The dark?
C1 is everything that's surrounded by a heavy black line.
Okay.
The on-highway is the shaded area.
Okay.
The off-highway is the unshaded area.
So, they're talking about the, in the on-highway?
On the off-highway area.
Oh, in the off-highway?
In the off-highway area.
Yeah.
Again, I haven't taken it any further than to receive a request of interest.
I mean, Bob, it never does any harm to explore options. I mean, this is the first I've heard of it.
Well, you're, you're, you're only the first by two days.
Well, it's good to be a little behind, I guess.
So, we...
Have we gotten anything from Southwood?
No.
Hasn't, no.
No.
So, apparently, we're not gonna get anything from Southwood.
Not from A.
Okay. That's probably a good thing, right now.
Yes.
The only other item that was on my list, and this is just because I was told that it was there, and I don't know that the zoning bylaw study committee's gonna have anything to do with it. I think it may be something that's going to happen with the building commissioner, Bob Bullock, but I'm told that there's the possibility that at this spring town meeting, there may need to be an alternative medicine zone identified.
Yeah, that might be something that...
Say that again?
Marijuana.
An alternative medicine zone identified, which is medical marijuana.
Okay, yeah.
And I don't know anything about it, but being on the Economic Development Committee, I said, well, you know, I'd probably treat that the same way we did strip joints about a dozen years ago. Yeah, there's a place you can have them.
Right, in the middle of Sop River.
No, it was in the C1 district, off-highway, in one location.
I know where it is. I know where it is, yeah. And it's a good thing. I mean, you know, rent them just...
Anyhow, I don't know any more than that, but I just, because it's up there, and it could become a discussion point, I thought you might as well know that the firecracker fuse was sent to us.
Why would we, you know, why would we not, not do that?
No, I think we should. There's still, there's a lot of, my understanding is...
I mean, I know there's a lot of unknown.
The state hasn't figured out rules and regulations yet, so there's a lot of confusion going on about what town, when towns are doing stuff.
But we could.
I definitely don't think you want it in town center.
No, we could designate.
We all have our own, no, we don't.
Why don't we just take our adult entertainment district and duplicate it and call it our medical research or whatever that, whatever the proper term is.
Okay. We should, I would look at that. Absolutely.
Well, again, the reason was, all of these things fall, fell into a category that needed some direction and decision before the third week of February, and this is the first week of February, so we thought we should just sort of introduce it.
You better get going. You've got some work to do.
Yeah. I got something today from town council about the alternative medicine that I'll forward to you tomorrow.
Good. Yeah, the zoning bylaw study committee meets tomorrow.
Good. Well, I thank you both for your contributions to that and your hard work, and your leadership, Bob. Thanks.
So, that was, you know, pretty much our, our agenda for the moment.
Did we get back to you what you needed?
I think so.
Scott, anything you want to add?
No. Good luck.
Good luck.
Well, I like that, you know, I get the idea, keep working on the, you know, the bridge.
My sense was that you folks could tell us how you would like to stay informed in the loop. We can either attend another meeting from time to time or whatever, but, you know, I'm expecting three or four or five zoning articles need to get on the spring warrant, and...
I'll tell you what I think would be really helpful. You know, it doesn't have to be until after the warrant closes, but before we go to the advisory board, I think it would be helpful if you did come back to one of our meetings, and let us collectively talk about where we are with it, how we're gonna present it, and all sort of get on the same page, so that when we go to the advisory board, we're consistent in how we present it, and we've also at least had the framework for what we're gonna take to town meeting in terms of that presentation as well. I think that would be, rather than trying to work it through with the advisory board, let's do that in advance of the advisory board. Personal opinion, yours?
That makes sense. I think there was confusion. Not confusion, it was hard to understand with some of the stuff.
Well, you, people, zoning articles are confusing, just period. I mean, even when they're well-packaged and well-presented, they're still confusing to people, and especially the numbers. And, you know, when you throw out X number of bedrooms, but they don't understand that properties and the configuration of the property is really limited anyway, and so the numbers aren't really the numbers, and I mean, they kind of, you know, they get glazed over, as they should.
What happened to it was just a fault?
Absolutely.
And another point on that, too, is, you know, because of the way you can speak and can't speak at times, it's hard to answer the questions sometimes, get a dialogue going, right? Because remember, you know, they'd say, you've already spoken twice, you can't, so you're gonna either get killed, you know what I mean? Like, you know, and I think what Jim was trying to get is, if you explain, what's, I don't wanna say the worst case here, but what happens if, like, when you approve the Kelly law, right? Because everyone talks about that paper road. I happen to live on Redway Branch, I know people thought people would be pouring out down there, so, you know, but it's hard on time meeting floor, right? Because we have rules, so I don't know, you know...
Two open questions on that.
Layman's guy, somehow.
Yeah. Kids' Place, how is that deeded? We need to know that.
That will come up again, right?
We asked, we were asked that question. I, again, speaking for me, I do not want to bring that forward, to bring it into the, into the B1 district. I, that's, to me, contradictory to what we've committed to people, and I, so, just my thoughts. I don't know how you feel about that.
No, I don't.
But, but we do owe folks an answer.
Clarify that, I'm sorry. The existing Kids' Place or the new?
Existing, existing.
Because people are worried about, they were, you know, again, the fear on town, I thought, I read from the crowd, was something would be coming right through there, they can exit right out of there, even though that was never intended.
That's a residential community, right in there, and I think there are a number of issues anyway. I think, I did a preliminary after town meeting, I think it was purchased for the purpose of a playground, but I, I'm not 100% sure of that.
I think Ian has that information.
But we ought to be able to find that out, and...
And we can definitely find out.
And, oh, you made me, I forgot the other one.
You wanted to change the, you wanted to do a bylaw change for the town meeting rules?
Yes, yes.
I read your mind.
Thank you.
Let's have the light go off.
Yeah, I, you know, we, many years ago, yeah, you guys, I don't know how you feel about it, but our attendance at town meetings have gone down, not up. And all of the things that we as a community pass, so nobody's at fault here, I mean, except us, the voters, because we supported the changes, I, just to me, they've had a negative impact on town meeting, not a positive impact on town meeting. And no one wants to stay there all night, but moderators have the ability to control that, and we have good moderators, and, you know, they can manage the flow of the conversation. But I think the fact that people don't have the opportunity to have the kind of dialogue they used to be able to have in town meeting has become a detriment to their, to people wanting to attend, I think. And I'd like to see us get a little bit more of that. I mean, it's an opportu, we don't want to belabor it, you don't want to have 40-minute debates on, you know, street lighting, but you do want people to have an opportunity to get explanations and ask questions and really get into understanding these issues, and we've kind of lost that. So, I, we all talked about this after the last meeting, and we, we should meet with a moderator, and if we can meet with a moderator just one-on-one and express this and see where she feels, how she feels about it. I mean, she's inherited it. She didn't, you know, she's inherited the rules. They aren't her rules, so. But anyway, I'd like to see us have a little bit more flexibility in town meeting.
Another item, this is personal, but I really feel that one of the reasons that we don't get more attendance at town meeting is the decision we took as a town to save a little money and not publish the warrant and mail it.
They talked about that, too.
I couldn't agree with you more.
So, I think it was penny wise and pound foolish in that regard, so my recommendation is spend the money.
It was all advisory board. It was all...
I'm not passing the buck, but I mean, isn't that where it came from?
It's their budget. I mean, yeah, it was a joint decision, but I agree with...
We make decisions with good intent, and if we have any understanding of what we're doing, we revisit them and say, did it work or not work? And I think some of these decisions...
Consensus will fix that one.
I think some of these decisions just haven't worked. I think they've, I agree with you. I think they've had, we thought they'd have a positive impact, and I think they've had the reverse. And so, we'd be remiss in not revisiting them and trying to fix them. I mean, I just don't want to lose, thank you. You read my mind.
You're welcome.
Thanks, guys. Thank you very much. Have a good meeting tomorrow night. Have you got a full group? You do now, don't you?
With us, yeah. I don't know who they all are, but I think I do. Just in case you want to know what I said.
Oh, okay, great. That's not a good sign.
This is, this is what everybody wanted to know.
Okay.
Your appointments are full. We don't know...
Do you want me to send you a list?
Doing your service, too.
Okay.
Walter?
Yes.
Okay.
Study committee, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks, guys. Thank you very much. Sure you don't want to stay?
Depends what you...
We're only gonna be here for another minute.
Huh?
You got popcorn?
No, that's what, popcorn, spaghetti, it's the time eating, too, right? Spaghetti.
Okay. Mr. Hathaway?
Couple additional items on the town ministry report. Ba-dum-bum-bum-bum. The Regional Communication Center, we're still, we've, last month or so, we've been kind of inactive because we're waiting, we've sent out an RFP for the architects, and we're reviewing that on February 20th. So, that'll, we're hopefully, hopefully right after we do that and then hire an architect, we'll be moving at much greater speed. Rob and I had a conversation and shared a little bit with this with Jim today, but he's interested in a program called Solarize Mass. And if you go to Google and look up Solarize Mass, it comes up pretty quick. I don't think the internet...
Still not working?
They've changed it. No, they, they've changed it and it still doesn't work, so.
I'll do it at home.
Solarize Mass, it's a, it's a program where you work, where the town basically works with the state, and we get some funding for marketing, et cetera, about $2,500 or so. And then we go out and do an RFP for, to hire an installer that will work with, will basically set a fixed rate or fee structure for installing solar panels on private homes. A bunch of communities are doing it, a lot of the ones that are in the green energy program for the state. So, Natick was one of the communities that Rob talked about that's had a lot of, you know, I think he said thousands of people signing up for it. So, you know, so it's, it's where people can get solar panels installed at a known price with, you know, repetitive results from home to home, and it's no cost to the town, a little bit of time probably in, you know, just putting the RFP together, et cetera, but we get some funding from the state. So, it's, it sounds like a very interesting program. I mentioned to Jim, and I don't think Jim had any...
I have any idea, Jack, what, you know, I've always not considered...
Do you have any idea, Jack, what, you know, I've always not...thought about, but any rough idea like what it costs? I know it's fixed at that point, you know...
I don't. Rob, I'm sure, probably could rattle the numbers off the top of his head. But I know, you know, obviously, when I do my tax forms every year, there's all kinds of incentives for green, so...and I think when I talked about with Jim, he said, you know, "We certainly notice more and more solar panels going up in town." So I think there, you know, again, there's no real risk for the town to go forward with this, and if we get three people to do it, that's great. If we get 300 people to do it, it's great, too. I think it's just a...and people aren't required to use that, you know, if the town picks an installer...
Right.
For some reason, they want to go with somebody else and negotiate their own fee, they can do that, too. So there's no...
That was the only real concern I had.
Right.
Jack shared this with me. I don't want to be in the position of telling people who they have to do business with.
I think it's a great way to...you trust it. At least now, you know you're getting the same deal as your neighbor, you don't have to go, "If you don't want to negotiate, don't want to negotiate," right?
I mean, bidding it and coming up with, you know, a grouping of people that meet the qualifications so that at least there's been some screening, that's a good thing. So it at least provides people that, but I wouldn't want them to be forced to go onto that sheet. If they want to deal privately, they should have the right to do that, which I understand they can do.
Yep, I understand you, too. I read some of the...I printed out the pamphlet today, and so I've got to write a letter tomorrow to the Department of Energy Resources and let them know that we're...we have an interest in that.
Yeah, no downside.
Yeah, no, I'm actually...I've got a roof that, you know...
I have a good roof, too.
I do have a good roof. I'm kind of concerned I'm going to blind people as they're driving down the road, but that's...
They'd have to be high.
Yeah. We'll see.
If you have a sliding roof, they have to be very high. They come off the hill.
Road comes down, right?
Come off the hill.
Yeah, so we'll see.
Put up your hot tub.
It should heat up my hot tub, it'd be nice. Be out there all winter. The Town Administrators from King Philip District that I met, so obviously, Rentham and Plainville, met with the KP Superintendent and discussed the 2014 budget. I believe they had their budget meeting the other night, so...and they also had their hearing a week ago Saturday, so not exactly breaking news here, but I think what they're looking for is a level services budget, and then they add to that, I guess what I would call minimal increases, as they're described, that the, you know, the building administrators have put together, and then Superintendent has taken those and tweaked those down a little bit, result being 11% increase to their budget. This translates to a 15.41% increase for Norfolk, or $1.1 million, 19.64% increase for Plainville, $869,000, and a 17.38 percentage increase for Rentham, or $1.3 million.
Last year, if I remember, their budget went up 4%. And our contribution was 7.5, that range?
That sounds right. I don't remember.
Ballpark is in that range.
I'm sure your memory's always very good with that.
And we had some pretty intriguing, entertaining discussions on how they package this budget. Are we going to get a chance to have some preliminary conversations with them before they come in for that budget presentation? Because I don't want to go through that again.
I'm sure we can. I mean, you know, and they...I mean, they, you know, as is this process every year, their numbers are all conservative in the beginning, you know, they're estimating healthcare, and they're going through some real healthcare changes right now. They've...and I don't...I won't profess to know the ins and outs of all of what they're doing, what they're going from a healthcare trust to kind of the more traditional municipal...
Long overdue. Are they going to pick up Medicare for retirees?
Yep. My understanding is they've already voted to add all those local options.
That's going to save them a lot of money.
Yep. So hopefully, this number will come down, you know, without cuts to services. It'll just come down as part of their negotiations for their services.
Trying to remember their number last year. That has got to save them close to $600,000 to $700,000.
I'm sure it's a big number. I mean, that's a huge number.
Maybe even a little higher than that.
More employees than we do, so it's a huge number.
Yeah, it's got to be about 3/4 of a million dollars that'll save them. Overdue, yeah. Was the health insurance...I don't remember, was the health insurance in their contract? Was that a negotiated...now, I know the law's changed.
Yeah, I think it is.
But in the past, it was in their contract, which is probably what caused the problem.
I think it is. I mean, and it's, you know, they've...obviously, they're working with their council, and they're...I mean, they're going through a very complex process, you know, of changing...
Well, the law allows them to do that now.
Yeah.
They couldn't do it before, now they can. Yeah.
I think they go with their contract negotiation with the teachers again, I think, now, too.
Yeah, it's not...they're not coming up this year, it might be one more year after this.
No, they got one more year. Yeah, it's next year it comes up.
I thought they were talking about something like that.
They're having...yeah, they're having...I mean, they're having negotiations about health insurance.
Oh, maybe that's okay.
That's...
But because of the law change, they have the negotiations, but they have...
More clout tonight.
They have the clout now to make this change, where in the past, it had to be a negotiating item, so...
And then, you know, well, then their whole ins and outs of it, I mean, so if they have savings, they've got to turn over a portion of those savings to the employees.
Yeah, which is a win-win.
Yeah, absolutely.
There's no...there's no reason why they wouldn't agree to that, that I can think of. I mean, I know they're all plan. They used to be self-insured years ago, and they went to the trust, and in terms of benefits, I mean, I don't know where they're going to go with the percentage of employer contribution, you know, that's...they're high.
Yeah, and that's...
But that's a different item, because it's still a percent of whatever the premium, so it doesn't matter. They're both going to save a lot of money.
They should.
I mean, this should be a win-win. If level heads prevail, this should be a win-win. Certainly going to be a win for the towns.
They also are going to ask us to put a...place a warrant article that establishes, authorizes KP to establish a capital account for the purposes of receiving donations and other funds for an artificial field. They've talked about this now for a couple of years, and my understanding is they have donations. Actually, Mark Dietrich is chairman of one of those committees that's helping them raise money.
So they need the same article on all three town warrants?
Yep, yep. And they gave us the language already, so we'll add that. We'll present it to you, anyway. And it's not asking for any money. I mean, they're actually just...they're looking to create...be able to have this fund that they can put money into, and then have it untouchable to move...
Makes perfect sense, yeah.
To other purposes. Last two things, just, you know, I mentioned it when Scott was here, he's met with the insurance committee, and, you know, then this is the insurance committee that is made up of residents. He's actually got an additional person that he wants to hopefully get some information from him over the next week or so, and we'll add him at our next meeting. But they've met and discussed our building and liability insurance, kind of gone through, you know, the ups and downs of our first year with Maya, relatively good year. We've had some customer service blips that I think we're getting over with now, but it wasn't quite as smooth a transition as we had hoped, but cost is still right. We've been earning some rebates. We got that trailer that we had shown you, so we're...and we've got the...we've had the safe driving program in here, so there's been a lot...many more pluses than minuses. But they're going to go through the process again this year, as they will every year, to see if that's the right fit for next year. Scott and I almost met with this other company, EBS Foran, a company that I had used a number of years ago, but they contacted us and we brought them back in. They specialize in Massachusetts employee benefits for...mostly for municipalities. They're going to perform a review of our medical plan, and we've already contacted, not at a fee. They're obviously looking for the next step, you know, either to be our broker or be a consultant for us in the future. But right now, they're going to review our health insurance plan at no cost. They've asked Maya on the health insurance side for loss runs for the last three years and look at that, and what they're really doing is they're going...they've got underwriters on their staff, and they're going to recreate what our fee structure should be and tell us if it's right or wrong. They are a well-respected company that a lot of municipalities use, and we'll have good luck with them.
And we'll save the budget review for the 26th, when you have most of the budgets in?
Yeah, well, I think that...I mean, I've just started receiving them, yeah, and...
We should stick aside a good hour to over those that night.
If the KP budget stays up at that level, it's going to create a lot of challenges for us.
It can't stay at that level.
We'll have the warrant, too.
Pardon?
We will have the warrant, the warrant will be done.
Yeah, so it'll be a full night.
Yeah.
Okay.
I just want to say one thing, the...oh, two other quick notes that happened today. Obviously, with the decision that Representative Winslow was considering, you wouldn't believe the number of requests for public information we received just today, came into each department looking for information from a national...I should say anti-Republican company, looking to dig up, you know, after talking to Rentham, my understanding is they're looking to dig up information. So they just looked...it's very harmless public information requests, but they're looking for, you know, what did we pay him when he was on the zoning bylaw committee, voting record, so it's interesting. There was another one, the planning board. Oh, the minutes of all the planning board meetings from when he was on the planning board. So that'll be an expensive request if they...if we're putting together the estimate for that, but it was interesting.
I guess it doesn't surprise me, but...
So Sean had actually talked to Rentham and said...they just kind of laughed and said, "Yeah, that's what we've been going through for the last three years with, you know, with Senator Brown," and, you know...
Hey, it's public...it is what it is. So be it.
The other thing, the other thing was, oh, public safety today.
Jeez. Can you believe that?
No, but it makes sense. Like I said, I think the Republicans would do the same thing if it was someone...I think it'd happen on both sides, but...
I just want to thank the public safety officials, I think mostly on the police side today, but fire was involved as well, but we had a lost teenager, kind of under a stressful situation, and missing for an hour or so today, and parents very concerned, and everything turned up fine.
Okay.
Just before dark, so it was a...
Good.
You know, good effort by them. They had police dogs in from Metro L.A.C. and found the young man.
Good job on the home burglaries, too.
Yeah, that's ongoing.
Unfortunately, I don't know if a person involved in it, which is...well, I guess I shouldn't say that, doesn't matter where they're from, but...
We've had them internally and externally.
Yeah.
It's...
Anyway, good job on catching them.
Yeah, I've got to say Detective Fletcher, others as well, but Detective Fletcher's earned his stipend as detective. He's done a lot of work.
Yes, he has. They all do a great job.
And Nate keeps tackling people. I mean...
Eric, I was going to say, I'm sure Nate could, too.
I was going to say, there's not much difference.
Yeah, they're both big boys.
Yeah. Okay. Any other business, Scott?
I guess we're not talking about the Town Hall, right? We don't have Rob, anyway, so nothing.
Do you want to talk about Old Town Hall or...
Well, I know...why don't we defer that till Rob's here?